Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us on this special council meeting this evening. To discuss a really important topic. So go ahead and call the meeting to order and do I pass it to Clementine or on through?
I can read our instructions for joining and giving public comment.
Please.
Okay, so for those of us in the chamber for our safe attendance of this public meeting masks are required for all who attended person regardless of vaccination status except those who are younger than two or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. Please keep your phones and devices in the council chamber muted to prevent audio interference with our meeting. And there are two ways to join us virtually in this meeting using Zoom, using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. An up to date version of the Zoom software must be used to call in by telephone dial toll free eight three three five six eight 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 six four. And then enter meeting ID one six one three eight four 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 zero pound. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at Monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I will call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit established for the meeting and a countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. And this meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay. And on Comcast channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay, and we look forward to receiving all of the public comments.
Okay, thanks for that Clementine. Can we go ahead and do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here. Okay, and then with that, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. The republic which has stands on a nation under the individual.
Right, so this is a public appearance item. We're looking at council vacancy, interviews, deliberation, appointment, and installation, and I'll pass it to staff for a presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask Clementine, we have just a very brief presentation for you. One slide only. And six backup slides in case you ask us questions.
It has a title slide too.
Is that one of the six?
No, no, we have two actually. So titled slide plus this one, Dave.
So this is just a brief reminder of the process that was directed for this meeting. So each applicant has their name drawn. From a random order, and I'll be using these little slips. To draw one at a time. They will have a maximum of three minutes for a verbal presentation to the council. Then one question will be asked by each council member with up to one minute to answer the question, and then any follow up question that is asked, there's also a one minute maximum response time. And this is just a reminder that in this appointment, the qualified candidate will be selected without regard to any of these characteristics, race, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, gender, gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, religion, mental disability. Physical disability, medical condition, genetic information, marital status, military status, veteran status, or age.
Beautiful. Thank you, Steph, for that quick introduction. So as everybody knows, we are considering the vacancy that's been left by prior council member Dan Albert. Due to the results of of the election. And so I believe several of you are here as candidates for that, and without any further ado, I just want to jump right into it. So let's go ahead and draw, and then we'll go from there.
So first, I just want to show everyone that we have all names, and then I need to fold them and drop them in our jar. Would you like to fold after I hand to you?
Yes.
Okay, Jackie Fields. Anne Michaels CV. Kevin Dayton. Jean Garcia. Jean Rash. Laura O Nagle. Daniel Presser. Beth Fabinzki. Connie Haw. And Jennifer Heydo. Is this mic on? So I'm going to select the first interviewee.
Super Bowl.
Connie Haw.
So Connie, why don't you come right up? And I think staff did a wonderful job of setting up this table here. Feel free to pour yourself a glass of water before you get started.
It's complimentary. Want to sit?
Oh, I can sit?
Yes.
I have to ever thank you.
Alrighty, and then once you get going, staff will start the clock and and you'll have your three minutes. So thank you, Connie, for being here and signing up to show interest in the seat.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank you too. I'd like to thank everyone for being here today, and I appreciate this opportunity. I also would like to say congratulations to you, Mayor, for your win on the election. I also wanted to thank or also congratulate Kim Barber and Ed Smith on their unopposed wins too. So a little introduction about myself, I'm a registered nurse. I worked at community hospital for more than thirty five years in various aspects, including education. I've also worked at other hospitals and education facilities in the area, and that's detailed in my. CV. I'm also a veteran. I know that doesn't matter, but I was honorably discharged from the Army here at the Residio of Monterey where I served at the health clinic. I also served at Fort Ord at Silas B Hayes Army Hospital. As I said before, I'm a longtime resident here. My children went through MPUSD. And I want to explain a little bit about why I'm here. I went to the mayor forum and I was very impressed with you. I was impressed with everybody actually, and thank you for running. But I was disappointed and concerned that we had unopposed candidates. So I thought, why not me? And part of why not me was because I was influenced by Ms. Barber. In that she said. I don't know all the issues, but I'm willing to do the research. And so I'm here right now to say that I don't know all the answers. But I'm willing to do the research. So if you'll consider me, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
You still had some time left. Are you good with the?
I'm good.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so my thought for the council questions was we could just do it randomly, and whoever wants to start can go ahead and take, take the first question.
May I start?
Go ahead.
What are your top three priorities for the city and what do you plan to do as a council member to achieve them?
Okay, well, that's a really good question. My three top priorities are water, housing, and quality of life. I realize that those are not the same as the city council's top priorities, but I really believe that we need water in order to get housing, and we need housing in order for people to have quality of life. So. What I'd like to do is hopefully. Continue the agenda for water and look at alternate ways like. There was the waste recycling of water that we could consider. There's desalination that we can consider. I really hate for us to have to ration again, but I am grateful right now for the rain.
Aren't we all?
Thank you.
Go next. Connie, how would you address a situation where your personal philosophy or opinion, you had the popular opinion, let's say, in your district. Maybe different or maybe at odds with what is in the best interest of the city?
That's something I'm familiar with. As a nurse, you often come across. People who have done things to themselves or others that you don't agree with what they've done, but you still take care of them. And I believe the same way with the city. I don't agree with everything in the city. I don't agree with all the people that I talked to and got signatures from. But we still need to take care of the city.
Thank you.
So before I go to the next question, we don't have an agreement where we're going to go right down. We can pick any one of the questions from this list. Is that correct?
That's correct, or you can ask a follow up question.
Follow up question, yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Didn't want to step out of bounds because we've got ten more to go, and I didn't want to make a mistake ten more times. Thank you, Connie, for coming.
Thank you.
The question I have to do, and I want to set the stage for this question is that. We have a lot of different city departments and the city is run by the city manager. We hire and fire the city manager, city attorney, that's our authority. But our police chief, our fire chief, and every in all the other department heads report directly to the city manager. So knowing that structure, so this question has to do with the budget. So how do you think the city should address two areas where the city is significantly underfunded? Under one hundred and fifty million in unfunded pension liability. And hundreds of millions of dollars in aging infrastructure, including the library, police station, fire stations, community centers, and sports center. So knowing the structure of the city manager. Who reports to the city council and you would join the city council, how would you approach the the two major issues, the purse? Unfunded liability and the infrastructure of our aging buildings.
Well, what goes through my mind first, and this is what went through my mind when I read this, was how did that happen? But it already happened and we're here now. So we need to find a way to raise funds. Or decrease our spending in order to fund those things. So we need to do a needs assessment. What is our priority? So we need to assess what the priority is. And weigh out what we have and what we don't have. We might have to. Look at an alternative way like raising taxes or something along those lines. We need if we need the funds.
Okay, thank you, Connie.
So my question for you would be, in the question that councilmember Barber asked earlier, as far as priorities, you had identified housing as being one of those. In what ways do you see that you can address the issue? I know you spoke of. Having an ability to come in and learn a lot, but do you have any ideas in regards to how you could help address that on the council?
Well, I'm not really sure. It's something that I would have to research, but I've watched my neighbors grow houses out of the garages. We just need to look at alternative ways of housing people.
Awesome.
We've done it. By the way, we've done a good job with downtown with putting like the apartments and things above the businesses. That's a really smart idea. I really like that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Connie. I think that's it. So you can take your seat again and think.
There might be follow up, follow up question round for any particular.
So I, if I understood correctly, what we had agreed to was it was either or. So we were doing a follow up question or a question from the, the. The list, from the list.
I was just thinking since she had so much time on the books that. There might be time for more questions.
I would just hate to set a different precedent at this point, especially when I think we were pretty clear last time. Okay, I, I, I agree. I think, you know, time was saved there, but I just wouldn't want to make sure that we stay consistent across the board. Perfect. Okay, thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will select the next interviewee.
Our ball winner, number two.
Exactly.
One seems good. Beth Fabinzki.
Connie, before you left, I meant to tell you, thank you for your service. Hi, Beth. How are you today?
Good. Does the clock start as soon as I start talking?
Yeah, so you can go right now and then we'll set the clock for you.
Okay, hi, my name, hi, my name is Beth Fabinzki, and I'm running for the council because it has always been my goal to become more involved in public service late in my very rewarding career. I'm a project manager for NASA's Jet Propulsion Laboratory. I have nine years of experiencing experience managing NASA missions. My current mission has a budget of over three hundred million dollars and a staff of well over a hundred people. Prior to that, I worked as an engineer supporting missions in wide ranging areas of science, including earth science, planetary science, and astronomy. My job requires strategic planning, technical problem solving, strong communication skills. Collaboration with government, commercial, and nonprofit institutions. Oversight of budget, schedule, and subcontracts. Assessment and reporting of progress and promotion of results through public outreach and press releases. I've also been a politically engaged volunteer for many years. Here in Monterey, I've been involved in Citizens Climate Lobby of Monterey, where I've started a local climate action committee. Fridays for Future Weekly Climate Strike at Windows on the Bay, Be There 4:00 PM. Habitat Restoration with the California State Parks and the Native Plant Society. I participate in my neighborhood association, and I am now on the Monterey County Economic Development Committee, representing research and development. I am an unusual candidate as a relatively recent resident of Monterey. I have much to learn from those with extensive experience living and working in the city in order to make wise decisions within the context of its history. In my experience, it's often a good thing to have a few people who are new on a team. Because they can revisit fundamental questions and bring ideas from their recent experiences elsewhere. They may be more flexible and less entrenched in their opinions and alliances. Finally, I love to do research, and my career has been based on mastering at a high level, a wide variety of policies, practices, problems, and solutions. To lead efforts by large teams implementing complex projects. We have many pressing local issues to address, and I'm probably in agreement with many of the candidates here. That they include housing, water supply, and fiscal solvency. But an overarching priority for me is mitigating and adapting to climate change. My goal is to scrutinize proposed solutions to our core issues to find overlap with climate change mitigation, so we can win on both fronts. So my pitch is that my newness in the city may be a benefit more than a deficit. And my background in science and engineering may be particularly useful, given the challenges the city faces in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. So. I'm going to rotate us, if that's okay with everybody, just to kind of keep this running smooth. So since Dr. Barber started first last time, we'll start with Alan this time.
Okay. First of all, thank you for your presentation. Beth. Let's see, I think I'll go with the same question. Could you? Actually, here's, I think I'm going to go with this one. Could you share with us an example? Of how you approach working with others effectively as a team? Certainly sounds like you've been a part of teams. But also particularly when you might disagree with a colleague. So how have you handled disagreements with colleagues on teams?
Yes, I work with large teams and small teams. And when we have disagreements, I find the best method of resolving them is to remind ourselves that we are both engaged in a common mission. Even though we may disagree with the method of achieving that mission. And in this case, this is a mission based role. We're all in this together for the city of Monterey, and I would use that as leverage to gain common ground with those with whom I disagree. And also I'd use a lot of jokes.
That's always good. Humor is good.
Yes.
All right. We'll go to Ed next.
Okay, thank you. Beth, thanks for joining us tonight and taking the initiative. Please share with us an example of. How you approach working with others effectively as a team. I'm sorry, I got off.
I think it's the same question.
No, I got off. I, I marked five was my choice, but Alan got me there. So. This one, it has to do with a little variation of serving with others. So serving on the city council is a significant time commitment, and you. You ran through all the things that you've been involved in, but public officials often attend and participate in meetings. And engage with constituents during business hours, evenings, and weekends and coffee meetings, and I can go on, but in all forms, we communicate with our community. But what is your approach to engage with the constituents and balance other commitments of your time and of your interest?
So I would like to acknowledge that I have a very. My job has a lot of requirements from me, and if I were selected for this role, I would fully engage at the expense of reducing my hours at work if need be. On top of that, I have a lot of experience working in a role that is twenty four seven, both quite literally. I sleep with my phone by my side because I'm on call and I have been for many years. So I'm used to serving in that type of role, and in the management role I have now, it is all the time. And it almost never shuts off, which is hard. So I empathize with all of you on that, but I do know how to do that job. That's my answer.
Okay, a follow up question if I might. So given that you are kind of in charge of your schedule, but your calendar can get bumped by work. And as you know, we, I think we published the list of the different committees and boards that we serve on. One, any particular of them that is attractive to you? And two, would you see conflicts where if you had a daytime meeting or nighttime meeting that has to be in person, can't be on Zoom? How would you balance your time commitment to the board assignment versus your work?
Um, so yes, there are some that are more attractive to me than others, especially those that overlap with my interest in mitigating climate change. So I would be particularly interested in those, such as something related to. So I would be particularly interested in those, such as something related to water supply, for example. Um, if I had a conflict with a work obligation, I would prioritize my role as a council member. That's the answer. And I would attend the um, meeting in person.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, so it comes to me next, and um, I think I might end up trying to keep my question pretty consistent here, and I imagine that others might. Um, identify housing as a priority as well. So I I would just ask the same question. Um, what is that? What does that look like for you? What how does maintaining housing as a priority um, as far as actual policy look?
So the intersection of housing with climate change mitigation is high density housing. And I appreciate the work that the council has done in the four properties that. You were seeking to um, develop for housing in the downtown area. I would continue to pursue that. Um, I understand that the issue is water supply when it comes to. Developing those into housing, and so we might need some patience, but I would do all that I could. Uh, to make progress on those fronts as well as other opportunities for redeveloping other underutilized properties downtown. Pending um, allowances of um. Additional uh, water permits.
Okay, thank you. Right, and we will go to council member Barber next.
Okay, so Alan took mine too. So now I have to go to another. So that was a popular one. So thank you, Alan. Appreciate that. Uh, so thank you so much for being here. Uh, my question is, in what ways do you agree or disagree? With the council's existing strategic direction as indicated in the value drivers in council priorities?
I'm showing the value drivers. I agree with the value drivers and strategic priorities. Um, to me, the most important one was transparent and inclusive governments, because without this practice, we can't achieve value in any other area. I've already said I appreciate the work the council has done in the area of housing. And um, I also. Support the value of protecting the environment. In one area, I think there is a value missing. Um, or rather a priority missing for environmental priorities, I would add climate adaptation. Particularly for sea level rise, which will have significant economic fallout for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, whoops, next up we will have.
Drumroll.
Anne Michaels Seavy.
Good evening, Anne.
Good evening. May it please the chamber, honorable mayor, council members, city attorney, city managers. My name is Anne Michael Seavy. Uh, most people know me well, call me Annie, and please feel free. Um, I would like to start by congratulating our newly elected mayor and council member. And by congratulating our uh, reelected without opposition councilman Smith and uh. Council member Hatha for uh, your continued service for the next two years for your term. Why am I interested in this position? I am emotionally and financially invested in the city of Monterey, as is my husband. I have lived here for 16 years. My husband has lived here for 28 years. We are both privileged to work in the city that we love. In a home that we own, well, sort of the bank, the bank owns it too.
Yeah.
My husband Art is a marine scientist who has owned and operated a unique small business in the city of Monterey. Since 1994, the city of Monterey is his landlord. For thirteen and a half years, I worked full time as an environmental crimes and consumer protection prosecutor with the Monterey County District Attorney's Office. Where I was third in line behind the elected district attorney and his chief assistant. And I love to ride our tandem bicycle from Fisherman's Flats, our neighborhood, through the city's recreation trails and along the beautiful waterfront. Fisherman's Flats is definitely a dog centric neighborhood. People go to the park and hang out with their dogs, and it's better to know the names of the dogs than the people. I've learned that. I love baseball and I enjoy watching the Amberjacks, especially because the the price is so approachable for families and you can sit. Next to the players and the other people who are there. Art and I are members of the Monterey Sports Center annually. We we uh, have an annual membership. I volunteer at the Community Hospital of Monterey. Uh, where I work in the Carol Hunt Breast Care Center and um. I also am a member of the Board of Breast Cancer Assistance Group. I volunteer at the library and the Adult Latency Program. Why am I qualified to serve in this seat? I am the second of six children from uh, humble means. One of the things I'm most proud of is the fact that I have worked paying jobs since the age of eight, starting with a paper route. Babysitting, um, working in movie concessions. I have a um. Bus tables. I've done tobacco farming, cooked it, tied it, dragged it, sewed it. Um, I have been a magazine editor for Boston's finest. I have. Uh, worked in the private sector as a civil litigator. I've worked in the public sector as a prosecutor. Uh, I've also done legal compliance work in the securities industry and have earned six securities licenses and insurance licenses. I am really proud of the fact that I paid 100% of my college and law school loans and paid off the debt timely.
Okay, that is time. Thanks for the intro. Annie, you said you go by Annie. Okay, perfect. Yeah, so this time we'll start with uh, Ed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Annie, welcome. Glad you could join us tonight. So the question I want to do is is I want to go to this question. I'm going to have a follow up as well.
Ed, yes, just so um, we can stay consistent.
Yeah.
Why don't you just ask your questions all in one? And then that way doesn't give. I just don't want us to develop a pattern of of going back and asking follow up questions if you want to ask them all at the same time, and that way that that can be your question.
I'll I'll see if that'll work. It depends on the answer. You know, so I'm I'm going to go with this question, and uh, if she does great, I won't need to have a follow up. What have you done to prepare for the important role of city council member? And have you reviewed the city budget, general plan? Or participated in city government? And I know that you said you you'd volunteered a lot, so I'm wondering um. In terms of your observation of what we've been doing, say, in the last six months. So if you could um, cover that, I would appreciate it. So. Uh, what have you been doing to prepare uh, city budget, general plan, or participating in city government?
Thank you, councilman. Um. Be transparent. Uh, we need to address the budget challenges. I did review the slideshow that the city manager prepared and. Um, it's it's a difficult time that we live in because of course, between the war in Ukraine and the pandemic. Even though we had uh, very good tax revenues and our uh, T O T tax collections went well, we still. Are in a situation where our expenditures um, outweigh our revenues. So. What I what I did to prepare was to think, well, what might we do? What ideas might I come up with to assist with? Um, generating some new ideas for for generating revenue and uh, one would be to um. Work on increasing convention center events. Let's say we uh, have one event per week and. Uh, that's 52 events per year, five to 500 to 1,000 guests. That's pretty impressive if we could put that together.
At the one minute? Okay, perfect. Alright, so so Ed, really, I I think let's try to stay consistent. And I mean, if you want, we can bring it to a vote by the council and we can decide if a follow up question is appropriate, but I really do want to try to stay consistent here. So. I appreciate your your desire to to ask the follow up, but for respect for everybody in the room, I want to make sure that we stay consistent.
So I thought we were saying a question and we can follow up on that question.
Ed, you asked me at the beginning of the meeting. And I clarified that it was either a follow up question or a question on on the form. So.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. All right, so I'm next. Um, and so I will ask the same question that I've asked others. Housing has been identified as a priority in the city by the council. Um, and so what are your feelings around housing policy? What does that look like? Um, what effort would you make in addressing that issue in the city of Monterey?
My feelings around policy, uh, Mr. Mayor, that. Prevention is is really key, and it's a lot less expensive than having to. Find revenues and water to to build lots of houses all at once to adjust the extreme need that we have. I I I get a visceral feeling when I pass by a homeless person and, you know, that's somebody's son or daughter out there, and. Uh, I really do think that we we need to prioritize. And meet with homeless people and meet with a coalition of people who can assist in dealing with with the homelessness. That is really. Uh, an urgent situation in my mind, and um, to that end, I did some legal. Research on on cases with respect to homelessness and. The Ninth Circuit came up with a case that was out of the city of of Boise, and it basically said, look, cities are on the front line. It is the obligation of the city to deal with with homelessness, and uh, obviously cities can't do that all on their own. But we can't criminalize homelessness. So.
You can go ahead and finish your statement.
We can't criminalize homelessness if there's a homeless person on public property. And there's no other place that the homeless person can go. So it's up to the city to address as an immediate urgent concern. What can we do to assist our homeless people with a place to go so that they aren't criminalized and we address first things first?
Thank you. All right, and we will go to Kim.
Okay, uh, my question is, the city's financial position requires the city to continue its fiscal health response plan strategies. Some of which include operational reductions or services where appropriate, address where appropriate. Addressing pension liability and investing in aging facilities. What approach would you take as a council member to address these issues when community members? Ask for services and new projects that the city may not be able to afford?
Thank you for the question, councilwoman.
Thank you.
I would look to uh, get information about the new projects that are being proposed so that I I felt equipped to. To render a decision based on facts and good reason. Without justifiable facts, my thought would be that we would really need to address as an urgency, the aging infrastructure. Uh, situation, for example, first, because the that could be a matter of life and death. That could be, that's certainly a matter of public health and safety, and lives matter. People matter first and foremost, and so. The new things, while lovely, uh, would have to take a backseat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Annie, thank you again for applying. Um, my question is, uh, let's see, this one, number 10. What do you see as the role of the city council? And what do you see as the role of the city staff? And how do you see yourself working with the city staff? To kind of accomplish, you know, your goals and objectives? So what's the role of a council member, the role of staff? And how do you see yourself working with staff?
I think that uh, staff are equal to everybody else at the table on the team. And there should not be any hierarchy to matter what the title is. We are all part of a team doing our best. Uh, the role of the city councils to make sure that we understand who it is who we serve. And first and foremost, that is the the city residents. They are our boss. And uh, we we report to them and we have a fiduciary responsibility to be fiscal stewards to make certain that. Our decisions are are based. With the best interests of our residents in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's every. Thank you so much, Annie, for considering the seat.
Let's see who's next.
Kevin Dayton.
Kevin. Hello, everyone. Uh, councilwoman Barber, I have not met you yet. I'm Kevin Dayton. The other three of you, uh, you know me quite well from my business in Monterey. Uh, just a reminder, and for councilwoman Barber, I'm a resident Monterey. I live here with my wife Nancy. My two children who are right now in college, who will be coming back on Thursday and Friday. We're looking forward to them. And I have 30 years of public policy experience and uh, work extensively in the public policy field in Monterey County. So you're probably asked saying, you know what, uh, I'm not sure I want to work with Kevin Dayton for two years on the city council because of his ways. So I thought about it and I said, what, how can I be an asset here? And I know you were talking last week about how it would be a team effort. And uh, I'll give you a proposition on what my role could be. This is an interesting position because it's two years. At large position, and then it disappears completely. The city council uh, position goes. I'm in District One. Whoever's in this position for two years really has the opportunity to speak out on things that. That you might not be able to do so, and I'll point out the big one that you're going to be dealing with, and that's those regional housing needs allocation. 3,654. I know you all probably have that memorized right now. How are you going to do it? Well, I know how you're going to do it, and you know how you're going to do it, and you're going to have a chamber full of angry people who say. I don't want rezoning done in my neighborhood. I don't want density housing here or there or anywhere near me. It's going to be very unpleasant. And I'm willing, what you can do is you can say, well, we've got to do the state mandates. And Kevin Dayton's really pushing this hard. I'm willing to be the front person on this. I don't care. Because I believe in the housing, you know, my background, I even did that Monterey Bay Economic Partnership Study of Housing. Second thing I want to do is push economic growth and job job creation. Once again, going to be controversial. That's not really on here on the value drivers, but you know what? You know, uh, we we need to have economic development here because that's what pays the bills for the things that we want. We're talking about sports center, uh, new library, new police station. This stuff is going to have to be bonded and paid for. I would like to see small business incubators. I like to see more partnerships with MPC and CSU MB Business School. Try to keep the young people here rather than leaving and going to Silicon Valley and elsewhere. We don't have enough children around here. Uh, no, not enough families. Our our enrollment in the schools is plummeting. Uh, I would like to see a big change in the demographics of this city to be much more diverse uh, in age. I am a renter and uh, I understand the challenges of rent here, and I'm going to be paying close attention to. How we deal with the challenges for people paying rent.
Thanks, Kevin. So you, uh, I'll I'll start with the question.
Yes.
Um, you you spoke to this a- already um, about that about the housing piece. Um, but I just offer you the next minute to maybe speak to that a little bit further in regards to what that looks like for you.
Tyler, matter who's in this position, you know what I want to see? I want to see construction on that parcel. I want that stuff demolished. Uh, on Van Buren Street, three blocks from my house. I've been walking by there. You've been walking by with Sasha for years. I've been walking by with Arwin for years. I want to see people living there. I want to see people living there who are working on the wharf. My son uh, has been working since sixteen year old part sixteen years old, part time in summers, working at Domenico's. Who knows the struggles that those people have? My daughter works at Campagnos. They're going to be coming back soon and going back to these jobs again. They know what it's like to be a regular person living here. Uh, it's outrageous. I I hate it when I drive to Salinas in the morning, either taking Highway One or Highway 68. My side of the road is virtually empty, and the other side is backed up for miles with people who are coming here for work. Uh, I just look at that and I say, there's something wrong with that. And I hope that it isn't because people here like it that way. But if I'm on the city council, I'm not going to be afraid to say some of those employees who are living, working in hospitality or healthcare, they should be living here.
Thank you. And we'll go to council member Barber.
Good evening. Thank you for being here um, this evening. So my question is, how would you address a situation where your personal philosophy or popular opinion in the district in which you reside may be at odds with what is best for the city?
Sure. First, I'm always looking for common ground, and the interesting thing is, one of the reasons why I really enjoy the housing policy. Is because you'll find people of all different perspectives coming together to say, this is a problem. So you know what? You have to listen to everybody's concerns about it, but you also have to always know where am I going to draw the line on compromise? And uh, you know what people do? They they, I I think we should always be speaking out strongly. When people attempt to abuse the California Environmental Quality Act, CECLA, to block things. It's a constant problem that goes on here in the city with the most egregious example of all being trying to s- get the LED lights out. That was ridiculous. That was ridiculous. And I mentioned before, I I'd love to see someday the amount of money that's spent on how much uh on legal fees fighting these. Lead the CEQA and trying to stop, uh, you know, electromagnetic radiation, radiation, all this sort of thing. So there has to be a long drawing drawn, but remember, we're we're representing the people and we need to listen to all of them.
Thank you.
Kevin, thank you for applying. Um, I'm going to ask you about our strategic plan. Uh, in what ways do you agree or disagree with the existing council existing strategic direction as indicated in the value drivers and council priorities?
Well, as I mentioned before, one thing I'd like to add to those value drivers is more of an emphasis on uh economic growth and job creation. And I know that is something that some people are uncomfortable with. Uh, looking at the rest of them and I, I'm cheating right now. I pulled them all up here. The little graphic is very good on this, but uh I particularly affordable housing is very important to me, developing or retaining a quality workforce, uh, secure water sources. Uh, you know what? If I get appointed, please you appoint me to the most boring, least desirable agencies. Keep, I will stay off of water uh be- because I know how how heated that is. But you know what? Put me on mundane things where I can really shine and it isn't full of, you know, angry, angry, and we can make some progress. So uh, uh, but but all of these transparent and inclusive government, very important to me. For those of you who follow me on Twitter, I'm really, uh, this is we, the people are the government here and back backdoor deals are bad. I just heard about one.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Kevin, thank you. Uh, I got a whole list of ones that I'm going to give you with, uh, you know, they're boring and no.
No, sure.
No, I'm kidding.
Yeah, I like to think every government is there for a reason.
Uh, no, humor aside, they're all, they're all important. Um, I want to go to uh one of the questions here that um I've asked before, but I want to add something to it. Uh, what have you done to prepare for the important role of the city council member? And have you reviewed the city's budget, the general plan? And if you could connect the relevance of um the neighborhood improvement uh C and uh NCIP uh in the process of the budget?
Uh, yes, sure. Uh, first, yes, I am familiar with the budget. I think Hans remembers the uh the day that I took uh five years of budgets and converted it with my Adobe Acrobat uh into uh Excel charts from PDF and then identified five areas where the spending had gone way up. And I'll note that one, obviously, one of the concerns about that is the sports center and how much money it's losing. And that's something that you'll be dealing with, I'm sure, for the next few years. I'm very pleased that you've chosen to do the one fifteen uh trust for pensions rather than uh being moved into the pension obligation bonds. I think those are very bad. Uh, but uh, we're going to have to continue looking at that budget. Fiscal responsibility is important uh for me and you're going to have to look at everything and say, do we really need this at this point? I'm concerned about recession and as you know, our economy is very dependent on hospitality. Uh, so I like to see that diversified, one of my my thinking behind this. Uh, neighborhood improvement plan. You know, I see some projects, that basketball core is really loved. But uh, as we look about this, I want to see, I I think we need to check that program again and see how it's going.
Thanks, Kevin, and thanks for um applying.
Thank you.
Okay, our next interviewee will be Jack E. Fields.
Jack, are you in the room? Is Jack potentially online?
I don't see anyone with that name on our call. If it happens on our meeting, if it happens to be the one person who is called in by telephone, could you please um raise your hand by dialing star nine to let us know you are Jack E. Fields? No, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe he's here.
Okay. Last call for Jack. Let's go ahead and draw the next name then.
Okay, our next interview will be with Jean Rush.
Have we heard anything from Jack at all? Okay. Bye, Jean.
Hi. Good evening, council members and Mayor Williamson. Why Jean Rush? Because I'm an attorney, because I'm a small business owner, because I am retiring and will have enough time to do the job. And because I have the background and experience of working with the city staff and residents, a result of attending one hundred percent of NCIP meetings for the last nine years, one hundred percent of the Parks and Recreation Commission meetings for the last two years, and about twenty, maybe thirty percent of council meetings and Planning Commission meetings for the last ten years, including close to all that addressed the wireless ordinance efforts since two thousand seventeen. What are my hopes and vision? My number one hope is that our new mayor be successful. I have seven goals, that we empower our neighborhood associations. Council members, while heating the Brown Act, need to regularly attend neighborhood association meetings in the same way that regular city council attendance occurs for our business associations. Number two, that we fix the flawed commission appointment process, which is controlled only by the mayor, which results in only one vision of the city to percolate through to nominations for appointments. Number three, reduce our carbon impact. We need to again address our policy to our two-stroke gas gardening tools and other two-stroke engines. We need to amend our zoning ordinances to increase the number of EV charging stations, ideally with universal chargers. Number four, elimination of homelessness with these ideas, that public housing dollars, water credits and land be spent only on the purchase of or construction of our permanent low-income housing inventory, that we create a housing voucher system and a small shelter to humanely remove campers from our public spaces to the goal of avoiding damage to our beaches and parks and to protect the land surrounding our marine sanctuary as well as our residents. That we continue renter relief through emergency financial support, create a rental registry that allows us to understand the market and further consider rent control. Goal number five, it's time to envision, plan for and fund undergrounding of the entire city with small grid energy independence as a potential add-on. At a minimum, we must strive by ordinance to underground the utility wires of any parking lot or street being restructured, meaning rebuilt. Costs that might fall to the low-income owner can be told until the sale of the property. Goal number six, updating our wireless ordinance. We must join forces with Carmel and obtain legal advice from visionary attorneys in the telecommunications field. Goal number seven, we must continue online access to our meetings to the value drivers of transparency, public participation and social equity to the other abled. To the degree that this decision may be up to the state, let's be part of any change needed to the Brown Act that will allow non-emergency remote access to participation in our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will start with Councilmember Barbara.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. I wanted to start with uh the question, servant on servant on the city council is a, I'm sorry, wrong one. The city's financial position requires the city to continue its fiscal health response plan strategies, some of which include operational reductions or services where appropriate addressing addressing pension liability and investing in aging facilities. What approach would you take as a council member to address these issues when community members ask for services and new projects that the city may not be able to afford?
Well, the bottom line is, if there's no money, we can't have a project. I did go on to the website, the city website, about the course strategy, and I was very impressed that in order to balance the budget, we can change the way we do business. We can do operational reductions, revenue enhancements and employee contracts. So we can tax, get more revenue through taxes or other ballot initiatives. We can reduce our liabilities through selling assets. Very controversial. We can look at our pay scale and we can we can streamline business. Um, but that's going to be hard because I know the city manager has really, really streamlined it. Especially after COVID or during COVID.
Hey, thank you.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Jean, thank you for applying. Um, I'm going to ask you um number ten. So could you describe what you see um the role of a council member to be? And then uh the role of staff? And then how do you see yourself working with staff uh as a councilperson?
Well, my understanding is that um the city manager is in charge of staff and that the council hires the city manager and to some degree hires the um city attorney and they run the show from there. So I personally would be rather careful about interacting with staff. I would hope, I I think what I would do is I would go to Mr. Yusler or um without Daisy chaining, get some advice from one other council member. So I I think it's a a tender issue. We we really don't oversee staff. We do interact with them. We interact a lot on NCIP because uh we have the the lead engineer for NCIP. So we are interacting with them to that degree.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, uh, Jean, welcome. Um, my question is, how would you address a situation where your personal philosophy or popular opinion in the district in which you reside may be at odds with what is best for the city? And if you can incorporate that uh the process of NCIP into your answer somehow?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Well, um, let's talk about pickleball since it was such a big uh topic. Um, I don't play pickleball and I don't play tennis, so I'm not sure. I had um a dog in the hunt there. Um, but I thought that the issue was how to share resources, how to hear the community. And um, that's what we did. We met with the Mandel-Gisnet Center and everybody said what they wanted. And what the tennis players wanted was to keep everything as tennis courts, which they've always been. And what the pickleball players wanted was more pickleball courts. And we divided the baby and we have one tennis court and one tennis court became two pickleball courts. And I think other than saying they want more of everything, which is totally understandable, I I think it relieved some of the congestion and anxiety and noise in the neighborhood.
Okay, and then it's to me. Um, so same question, just in regards to the housing. You did speak to that piece a little bit. You did talk about the housing construction piece, but you also brought up the renter piece. So I just give you the space to uh maybe expand on that for the next minute.
Well, I do think we should investigate um with the registry application fees. Coordinating that in a way where people don't have to pay forty dollars every time they look at an apartment, that maybe we could have some kind of streamlined application to make that more endurable.
Thank you, Jean. Appreciate you. And that is it.
Thank you.
Thanks for uh applying.
Okay, let's see who's next. Laura O'Nagle.
Good evening, Laura.
Hi, Mayor. Can just get my um iPad to open up here.
No worries, take your time.
I should be in business. Can you hear me on the mic?
Absolutely.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to put my name forward for this position. It's been a long-term goal of mine to give back to this community that I care about deeply. My parents moved to Monterey in nineteen fifty-one with the opening of the postgraduate school where my dad was a professor. I graduated from Monterey High and left to go to college. But my husband and I were married here fifty years ago. And in two thousand fourteen, we returned here to retire. I inherited my mother's home, an older house that we demolished and rebuilt. Since I was elected president of the Del Monte Beach Neighborhood, I discovered that my mother also had served on its board. Harry and I have three grandchildren, the youngest born just six months ago, making me mindful of the future and needing, feeling like we need to prepare for a better tomorrow. I'm retired from a career as a city planner and social justice advocate. The scarcity of affordable housing threatens the future vitality of our city. I've experienced working with the homeless and specialized in housing development, strategic planning, city management and neighborhood organizing. I'm optimistic about Mayor Williamson's plans to build affordable housing and to promote greater transparency in local government. A recent story from my time as neighborhood president occurred with the Navy announced plans to install a five G tower on their property just west of our neighborhood. A number of our residents raised concerns about its effect on their view shed and possible health risks. I worked with NPS staff to arrange meetings between our residents and Navy personnel. City manager Hans and city assistant city manager Nat uh came to those meetings, as did KSBW News. Ultimately, the neighbors' concerns were satisfied. Uh, and they even helped choose the color of the tower, a green, which blends in with the surrounding cypress. If entrusted to do this job, I will not only bring representation for District Four, but also gender diversity that to the council. I have the time to do the work and everything I have done prepares me for this engagement. I will search for and bring forward proven approaches to the problems facing our communities. I look forward to getting to know all of you on the council and the mayor and working with our fine city staff, other government agencies, residents, businesses to ensure our historic city thrives as we move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, in this round, we will start with Councilmember Hoffa.
Laura, thank you for applying. So um I'm going to ask you a follow-up question to something that you shared in your presentation. You mentioned you're a retired city planner.
Yeah.
As you know, the city of Monterey um develops lots of different plans um and we have over the years. Um, I wonder if you could just uh share your observations in terms of what do you think the city does well in terms of planning? And do you see any areas where we might improve in our planning?
Um, yes, I, yes, I do. And I I I um I I think that's the question uh that you were you were asking about um what ways that uh the existing str- strategic direction and value drivers uh are are working. And I I think the results of the most recent election indicate that people voted for a change in the city's direction because residents realize the lack of affordable housing is an existential problem. This priority is not like all the other equally important priorities. The people have spoken. Focusing on housing development will be a shift in emphasis for the council's direction and will take time. New housing means growth in the city, though not outside our footprint. Since we are largely built out, this means infill housing and increasing density in certain areas. We'll need to learn how to expedite and facilitate housing development, how to negotiate with developers.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Good to see you again. Uh, this question has to do with uh how we fix some budgetary issues. So how do you think the city should address two areas where the city is significantly underfunded? Over a hundred and fifty million in unfunded pension liability and hundreds of millions of dollars in aging infrastructure, including library, police station, fire station, community centers and the sports center? So your ideas, please.
Yes. The unfunded pension pension liability must be addressed over time. And the sooner the money is invested, the sooner it can accrue earnings, thus lessening the long-term burden. Explore what CalPERS recommends to change our funding formula in order to move that net present value to cover our pension obligations. On infrastructure and our other capital plant, the budget should reflect the cost of rebuilding that capital plant over the course of its expected life. The recent increases in the sales tax can help offset these costs. That's my answer.
Thank you.
Okay, then it comes to me and and um I think my question is pretty clear at this point. Um, in regards to to housing, you spoke about increased density infill. Do you want to take the minute to expand on uh your thoughts around housing?
your thoughts around housing policy in the city of Monterey?
I do. On housing, we need partnerships and collaborations as most affordable housing is developed by these kinds of public private ventures. For the higher density areas that have been identified in the general plan as candidates for multifamily housing, we could explore local plan initiatives to get community input and potential financial participation in redevelopment projects. We could develop incentives the city could offer to illicit development proposals. Work with large employers and banks under the Community Reinvestment Act to invite them to participate. For housing developments that have been approved but are not yet under construction, we could track the process and be available to renegotiate plan specifics.
Thank you so much. And then next we'll go to Councilmember Barber.
Thank you for being here, Laura. I appreciate you applying. So my question is, please share with us an example on how you approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague.
Can you tell me what question that is, please?
Question number five.
Oh, thank you. In working with COPA, the Industrial Areas Foundation affiliate here on the Central Coast, I learned the art of the relational meeting to build relationships with people through one-on-one meetings. The purpose is to find common interests, set objectives, and accomplish things together, including working through disagreements. I was prepared for the COPA approach because of my graduate school training at the New School for Social Research where all of our work was done on teams, which was very different from any schooling I'd had previously. It wasn't easy at the start, but it was key to the program's success in teaching us students what most work situations are like. This was also a very important tool for the work I did in community planning and neighborhood capacity building. When I would have disagreements working with community leaders, I would always try first to understand, second, to seek help and be understood, and third, to reach conclusion.
Thank you.
And just on time. Thank you for your consideration, your application to the position.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here today.
The next interviewee is Jennifer Haydo.
I can't believe you want an Italian woman to speak for only three minutes. Don't know if it's possible, but I will do my best. My name is Jennifer Haydo, and I'm delighted to be here in these chambers tonight with such quality applicants and such enthusiastic community members. It feels really good to be part of a community that cares enough to participate with this enthusiasm and focus on the democratic process. Government only works when we show up. I'm showing up because I believe in public service, civic participation, and community activism. These are my lived values. They are part of my daily life, my career, and my long term relationships that I've built on the Monterey Peninsula. For over 25 years, I've grown deep and overlapping roots here in many different spheres. I'm a longtime resident, a renter, a small business owner, a teacher and educator, a performing artist, a volunteer, and a volunteer coordinator, a manager, nonprofit event community organizer, and caretaker. I'm invested. I'm engaged. I'm keenly aware of the substantial challenges we face as a community, and I'm eager to be part of a team that develops bold and creative solutions to those challenges. I have the time, I have the energy, and I have the clarity to commit to the process. I also have the skills that I think are directly applicable. And as an honors graduate of UCSC in both politics and art, I trained to think critically, to do solid research, and to vigorously debate. I know how to dig in and grapple with issues, and I know the importance of doing that honestly and respectfully. The urgency of our times demands it. We cannot afford gridlock and inaction. Our city can do better, and anyone who knows me will testify that I am a doer. But I act in service to others. I've worked for decades in a career serving health and well being of those around me with specific training in mindfulness, stress management, communication, and trauma informed teaching. As a manager and teacher, I practice problem solving and team building every single day. While building my small business in Monterey, I have made a point of supporting other businesses, nonprofits, and artists, and I believe in collaboration and pooling our talents. Leadership is not about speaking the loudest. It's about helping others find their voices and bringing everyone to the table. Inclusion and collective solutions. My skills as an educator in the classroom and manager and volunteer team leader translate well to a city council job. It's important to come with structure and agenda, but it's just as important to listen, watch, and adapt to the needs of people in real time. An honest broker for the city needs to come to discussions with their homework done, but without their mind made up and the ability to listen to new ideas and new information. I work with a wide variety of personalities and needs and communication styles. And that's with students and colleagues and administrators.
Thanks, Jen. Could we start with this? So Ed.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for coming and applying. What have you done to prepare for the important role of the city council member? And have you reviewed the city's budget? General plan or participated in city governments, attending meetings? So if you could tell us a little bit more about your knowledge base.
Sure. I've spent the last 20 years in Monterey, not just attending meetings for the Monterey City, but also for Pacific Grove and for other cities. Coastal Commission meetings, Planning Commission meetings. I was just at the recent Coastal Commission meeting from about nine in the morning till about 6:00 PM. I also have worked with council members and mayors in the past as an advisor and helping them to get elected.
And, and I guess one of the, the things in here was, and I want to make sure I heard you.
Yes.
Is that the city budget, have you read the city budget?
I did. I, I had, I had a good time doing some homework. I was mentioning to a friend that I was like, wow, this feels so good to actually be able to dig into something. The city budget is complex. And we do have some pretty, pretty big challenges on the horizon, but we also have some really smart people on this council, and I feel really good about our ability to wade through those challenges. Thank you. I had a really good time reading through the, the vision and the mission and the value drivers. I picked this apart to death, so that would be a fun conversation to have at some point.
Okay, so the next question is from me and just housing. Did you want to expand on the housing?
Go on the housing, because I, I love that every candidate has talked about this so passionately. I think that we can say consensus in this room is that housing is if not the most important thing that this council is facing, definitely one of the top things. You cannot have a sustainable community if people can't afford to live in the place that they work. You can't deal with sustainability and environmental issues if people are driving 30, 40, 50, 70 minutes to get to work every day and back. So we have to look at infill. We have to look at our housing codes. We have to aggressively and enthusiastically pursue the projects that the city already has in process. And we have to be really honest about the sometimes resistance we have, and I'll just, I'll just name it, the NIMBY, the NIMBY approach, not in my backyard. We have to start being more inclusive about bringing people into affordable housing in the city.
Thank you. The Councilmember Barber.
Good evening. Thank you so much for being here and applying. My question is, and I know that you have talked about some of your platforms and one of your parties being housing. But for one of your top priorities, maybe one of the three that you have not mentioned yet, can you briefly share one or two specific ideas you have to address that issue in the community other than housing?
One of the other top priorities I think that this council has to address and something that I'm particularly interested in is water. I think it's really important for us to work with Mary Adams with her, her regional approach to solving some of our water issues. I think that we have to enthusiastically investigate some of LaFco's recent decisions with regards to our recycled water and desalination choices. I think that we need to enthusiastically support the expansion of pure water Monterey and the recycled water movement and the things that we can do that have the least impact on our coastline. And I also think we have to do some of the smaller things like look at rainwater catchment and gray water as being standard for all public buildings and standard for all new building.
Thank you.
Jen, thank you for applying. I'm gonna ask question number two of my, put a little bit of a, a follow up kind of spin on it. So how would you address a situation where like your personal philosophy? Or the popular opinion in the district where you reside? Maybe at odds with what is best for the city? And to kind of maybe put it in context, imagine we are dealing with housing and looking at our zoning, and there are a lot of people here who have a different viewpoint than you, maybe even some of them people that you know and like in the community. How would you deal with that?
These are, I think this gets to the crux of, of leadership and being part of a smaller community. And that is, we all have, we wouldn't be here unless we had opinions or positions about some of these things. I think it comes down to communication, compromise, and conflict resolution. So having an agenda and having a strong opinion is great, but you have to be able to bring everybody to the table. And you have to start with where you have common ground and then build from there. You have to have public forums. You have to have town halls. You have to bring the stakeholders together, because if you make a decision without people feeling included in the process, you'll never get buy in.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. We're all set with you. Thanks for applying.
Okay, it's down to the last two. Daniel Presser.
Well, first of all, I thought I was going to talk to the Monterey City Council, and I think it's the Gnome City Council with the door open. I asked Nat if we could, Nick, if we could change, you know, shut the door, and he said, no, we can't do that. Okay. I'm Dan Presser, and I'm seeking the open position. The one that represents all the districts of the city. And I'm doing this because I adore Monterey. I'm a former Texan who moved here in 1989, right in time for the Loma Prieta earthquake. My wife and I fell in love with the city when we came here for her to interview. Today, I received a letter from Congressman Jimmy Panetta just today. He thanks me for something that I did, and then he adds, your insight and perspective are invaluable. Right off the bat, here, I'm going to tell you what I'd like to do to help Monterey, help happen for Monterey. Number one, low cost housing. My wife has a first cousin who lives in subsidized low cost housing in Palo Alto. She never could afford to live there unless she had low cost living housing made available to her, even though she's in a skilled medical field. Now retired, she has use of the apartment at the same rate. And Monterey needs to keep and help house deserving individuals who otherwise can't afford to live and work here. Without low cost housing, we could lose a diverse sector of our population. Number two, now here's a real novel idea. Our housing problem is really a peninsula problem. Wouldn't it be better if all peninsula communities worked together to construct a top notch, well-built, low cost facility for full time residents? Number three, I'm doing what I can with regard to housing. I'm committed to help build a veterans home here like the one in Yountville. Monterey, along with the county, have lots of active duty and retired veterans. As the veterans age, they will need housing and medical care. Number four, I'm a Vietnam era Navy veteran. Number five, I'm a team participant. I'm on the Monterey County Fair Board and was recently elected president of the board. Number six, I'm very much an environmentalist. I'm a former president of the American Cetacean Society Monterey Bay and would like to make sure that Monterey doesn't drown due to climate change. I'm for physical responsibility. We must not waste taxpayers' money. We need to build a financial cushion for bad times. I believe in democracy. Our citizens speak with their vote. CalM customers voted for a citizens takeover, and lots of bad stuff happened there. Monterey is basically an outdoor community, and people love to hike and go to the outdoors. Outdoor dining is perfect. And lastly, number 10, I'm concerned about American Airlines. They pulled servicing their aircraft out of San Francisco, and they are pulling out of towns all across the country, and it could affect Monterey.
Thanks, Dan. And first question comes from me.
Please, so. Mention the number two, okay?
No, it is not a specific number, it's a specific follow up to to the housing conversation.
All right.
And so just like the other candidates that I've asked, if you wouldn't mind speaking further to, you gave the example of, I think it was your, your niece in Palo Alto. So if you could speak further to what that looks like in the city of Monterey, what, what would you do in regards to housing policy?
Well, what she has is an apartment in Palo Alto, right downtown. And it would be nice to have something like that, but like I said here, in my estimation, this is a peninsula problem. Every city shouldn't, community should not have to build their own. Let's get together, form a group from each city and see what we can do, because we can put our monies together. We can just build something great. It's gotta be strong. It's gotta last. And then we can figure out a ratio and proportion for each city. And we can find a location and build the right thing, charge the right price for people to live there. And then we can have a community that is strong, because we will have good people here, even school teachers, and from, from people who yield hammers to school teachers, to doctors. Doctors are leaving here because they can't afford to live here. We've got to do something about it.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Barber.
Good evening. Thank you so much for being here. My question is number three. The city's financial position requires the city to continue its fiscal health response plan strategies, some of which include operational reductions of services where appropriate, addressing pension liability, and investing in aging facilities. What approach would you take as a council member to address these issues when community members ask for services and new projects that the city may not be able to afford?
Well, that's a, a great question, and the first thing I would tell the citizens is, you're right. You're absolutely right. We need to fix whatever the person is asking about. But at the moment, we can't afford it. And that's real straight truth down the line. Hang in there, I would additionally tell him. And we'll put your project high on the priority list. And it'll hopefully be one of the first things we'll tackle when the time comes and we have the money and we can afford it.
Thank you.
Dan, I'm gonna ask you a question related to number five. So please share with us an example on how you approach working with others effectively as a team, particularly when you might disagree with a colleague. And if, if you're, if, if you might, if you've had a situation if you've had a situation on the fairgrounds board, for example, where you may be disagreed with a colleague, what was the situation? How'd you work it out?
Well, first of all, I'll do what I did that day. Is I listened to all the arguments and it was about removing a some planter and replacing it with cement for some more parking. Well, like I said, I'm an environmentalist and I listen to everybody and you know, if I have to vote different than everybody else, I will. In this case, I lost four to one. And they tore it out and put in the cement, but that's the way it goes. When you're sitting on a board, you just have to say what you think is best and I did and it didn't work.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan, for, for coming. So I want to expand on some of your priorities and ask you a follow-up question. It has to do with the role of city council and the role of city staff. So you listed quite a number of priorities. So let's just narrow it into the low-cost housing piece and the VA piece. And ask you, what's the role of the city council? And what's the role of the staff to help you accomplish just those two?
Wow. Well, the housing one, I see it goes beyond us. So we have to reach out to other communities to help us put it all together and to help them put it all together too. That's why it's a great thing to go beyond our boundaries. And I would want to settle that here first, of course, but then we can take the lead and talk to the other councils, to the other cities and work it out and put it all together and see how it can fit. And one of the more important places is with other communities involved, we have to find the right location to put it. We all may agree that we need this, but where is it gonna go? You know, if we put money in it and we as a greater population, we have more invested, they'll want more money from us. And then, of course, we have to include Pebble Beach.
Thank you, Dan.
Is that it?
That is it. Thank you, Dan. Thanks for applying.
Okay. I want more.
And our last interview will be Jean Garcia.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, members of the public, and also fellow applicants. Good time going, alright. So my name is Gino Garcia and I have had the privilege of calling Monterey my home for twelve years with my wife, who's present here tonight, Emily, and our three children. We knew we wanted to set down deep roots in this wonderful part of our great state when we moved here from Los Angeles. Monterey has offered us its natural beauty, its tranquility, peaceful setting, especially for raising our family and lots more. Our great city of Monterey does have its challenges and have provided the opportunity to serve the residents of Monterey. I intend to uplift the strong voice of our residents and promote the goals and aspirations of our communities. I'm a proud resident of District Four, but I'm also clear that the vacant seat is one that's at large. If appointed to this council, I intend to represent the residents of Monterey throughout the whole city. I'm an assistant planner with a local nonprofit and I assist in the implementation of safe routes to schools plans throughout Monterey County, which also provides a platform to advocate more widely for bicycle and pedestrian facilities with the goal of increasing safety in our neighborhoods, not only for our students, but families and the community in general. Through this work, I also facilitate steering committees through a participatory budgeting process that requires close attention to inclusion, tolerance, equity, compassion. My work led to an appointment in two thousand twenty-one as the representative for the city of Monterey at the TMC Bike and Pet Committee. Addressing local issues such as housing homelessness, water scarcity, budget stability, et cetera, must be done in a manner that is unique to Monterey. What I bring to the table are strategies to create the spaces in which we can have constructive conversations, even with polarized views, so that we can move away from tension and closer to a solution. Let's stop working in silos and enhance our collaboration, working all together. I look forward to sharing, if appointed to this distinguished council, my professional and personal experience that I am confident will contribute to the continuous improvement of our beloved city. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. We will start the questions with Councilmember Barber.
Good evening. Thank you so much for being here and also applying. My question is, for one of your top priorities, which you named many different parties such as homelessness and order and some others, please briefly share one or two specific ideas you have to address that issue in our community.
Yeah, so I have, my, my top three priorities would be, because I live in the world of transportation planning, mobility and infrastructure, aging infrastructure especially are top of mind for me. We need to determine how we make our city more competitive for grant applications. Also, number two, housing is one of my priorities. Look at ways to increase housing units in the short and long term. Zoning, look at zoning, streamlining ADU processes, which I think are still a little bit cumbersome. Help renters get into rental units. Some folks need up to five, six thousand dollars just to get into a basic apartment. Water, of course, is one of the top priorities as well. We can't talk about any of these issues individually without having to talk about the, the others. The water, I think we're on the right track with pure water, but we do need more. Implementation of residential rainwater harvesting, drought tolerant landscaping, water conservation techniques.
Thank you.
Gino, thank you for applying. If it's okay, I'd also like to ask a follow-up question to something you mentioned. So intrigued by the work that you've done on safe routes, Monterey County and, you know, TMC Bike and Pedestrian. I'm just wondering, City of Monterey developed a multimodal plan. I think it might have been in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. I think we're gonna be looking at updating that. In your view, what do you see as sort of some of the things that we could do to improve the city's, you know, multimodal plan and make it safer for bikes and pedestrians?
Alright, thank you. Great question. So I think there's a a whole list of things that the city could take a look at. I think bikeability is would be one of the top items to look at. Just because the infrastructure that we have currently in place is pretty outdated. And, and the city is also looking at some of those. I know that there's some projects in the pipeline for Del Monte and and also some improvements along the bike trail and all that. But how do we get to those trails, right, those bike paths from our neighborhoods? So I think it's great what we're doing in terms of Fortag, what happened at the project that was built North Fremont. Great, let's expand on that because that's what's, what's gonna be needed. Especially if we're talking about density, increasing housing density, we're gonna need to figure out how folks are gonna get from one place to another.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gino, for applying. Thanks for coming tonight. So I want to modify this question about your experience because you've done a really good job outlining your priorities and your planning background. What previous job experience or skillset do you have that you think would benefit the city council if you're appointed? But if you could sort of close the door on the planning world and dig, go deeper into your skillset.
Right.
And then morph that into the role of the city council. So not the planning part, I think you've done good, but give us a skillset piece and the role of the city council.
Got it. Thank you. So in terms of my skillset, really what I bring to the table is, and this, this comes from years of practicing and being out in the field, not necessarily only in the planning world, but in, in other jobs that I've had, where I've built the, the skillset that I think inspires trust in folks, inspires action, inspires conversation. And that's really the key, I think. Because we are talking about very polarized issues, we first need to make sure that we're bringing together people, finding commonality and bringing them together to at least have a conversation. And there's, there's, there are many strategies to doing that. But I think the more effective one is to be able to bring a group together with a heated, heated discussion and just allowing everyone to understand that we're all on the same plane towards the same goal. So that's a very specific skill that I, I think I, I can bring to the table.
Thank you, Gino.
Okay, I'll close this out here. Housing, you had identified the idea of short, long-term. I think we all know what long-term housing construction looks like. Maybe you could speak a little bit more to the, the short-term or any other thoughts that you have in regards to housing policy in the city?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I was really excited when conversations started years ago about ADUs. I think that's a great strategy, low-hanging fruit type. The issue there is that the process to get those done are costly and they're cumbersome and confusing. So for a property owner to be able to develop an ADU, it takes a lot of effort. And in many instances, a lot of cash. So we need to modify that. We need to make it a little bit more streamlined. So that's for the short, short term. And really, in terms of housing, it's gonna take a combination of, of several, several approaches. ADUs being one of them. You know, construction of multi-family properties. And I think we have great opportunities since general plan conversations are beginning to really start identify those locations. North Fremont can be one of them.
Awesome. Thank you. And thanks for applying.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Gino.
Okay, so we made it through all of the candidates. And we're gonna go to public comments next, but let's take a five-minute break just to let everybody stretch. Let's reconvene at seven forty-three. Minute mark, two minutes actually technically. We're gonna get this right. So can I get an identification of in the chamber and online? Can we get a show of hands of how many people are wanting to speak tonight for public comment? So we have two, four, five, six, six in the chamber. How many do we have online?
Looks like currently five, six. Maybe it's going up.
Okay. Let's do two minutes. Let's do two minutes.
So hey, are we going to invite Jamie?
Discuss the. Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. So the applicant that we called earlier is now here. And so I just wanted the council, we have Jack Fields. Jack, are you still here? So we called your name earlier. We had a process that we had set up. And so I just kind of wanted to check in with the council to see if you all still want to move forward with considering him outside of the process that we had already established.
Well, outside or just we go back to doing the interview?
Yeah, well, so, so just to be clear, we had established a process last week and then reiterated it at the beginning of today's meeting where we would draw names and we would go in that order. And so when the name was called, he wasn't here. So we're going, we're, we're going out of that process to consider him tonight. And so that's what the, that's what the question is being posed to the council right now.
So my perspective would be because we have not had that much time since we finished the other interviews that I would like to consider doing the interview process with him. And I understand that he had a, a conflict that involved his, his children to get home and feed them. So I would just soon allot him the 10 minutes and, and hear from him.
Okay.
Uh, Kim, do you want to go ahead or should I share my thoughts?
No, that, I mean, that's fine. I appreciate it. Thank you, Alan. I, I think it's fine. But I just want to also be fair to everyone else who did prepare and plan according to not knowing when they were going to be called. I just want to just, you know, I'm, I'm okay with listening, but I do want to make sure that we're fair to everyone else who was in the room.
Yeah, and I kind, I kind of feel like, Kim, I guess I, I would err on the side of inclusion and I think give him the opportunity to speak and for us to ask questions, but you know. Okay, so I think we have a general consensus. Do we, do we need a vote on that? So I think we have a general consensus. I, I agree. I think, you know, I imagine that we'll take it into consideration that there was a late arrival. Seems like a reasonable reason. But like, like Kim said, I think the planning piece, but nonetheless, Jack, if you wouldn't mind coming to the seat here in front, and then we'll give you three minutes to do your opening statement. And then we'll give you a minute to respond to one question from each of the council members. So thanks for joining us tonight. And then as soon as you start, staff will start the clock for you.
Okay. First of all, thank you for considering this, Mayor Council. I'm Jack Fields. My wife and I have been residents of the city of Monterey, specifically in the area now known as District Four for over 30 years. My two children, ages 13 and 18, are being raised here and have attended Monterey schools. I have 20 years of experience as a public servant, occupying a diversity of positions from frontline employee to group manager to project manager and analyst. I have a bachelor's degree with a cum laude standing in business administration. I have a professional background in, specifically in taxation and code enforcement and have hundreds of hours of experience teaching small businesses in our greater Monterey Bay area. I was a volunteer with, I was an administrative assistant with a local nonprofit for a couple of years until they moved their operations and headquarters out of town. Over the last 30 years, I've attended many city council meetings and community meetings. The most recent one was the one that was addressing climate change and the present threat of the rising sea level. I don't know if I should add this, but frankly, I hadn't really planned on running for city council until after my retirement from federal service, which is about three years down the road. But it's due to the personal urging of 10 to 15 residents in my neighborhood and ultimately obtaining over 30 signatures that brings me here before you tonight. I'm not an activist and I don't have an agenda and nor do I have years of experience in various committees or city governments, governance. However, I am someone who deeply and dearly loves the city. I'm eager. I work well in teams and I'm a fairly quick study. What I lack in direct city experience is mitigated by my strong desire to work with everyone and build a better community.
Thank you so much. Okay, we will start with Councilmember Hoppa.
Thank you for applying, Jack. I'm going to ask you question number 12 on our list. Being on city council takes a time commitment during business hours, evenings and some weekends. Given the amount of time required for the position, how will you handle the time commitment being on city council?
You would ask that given that I, I got tied up tonight with kids. But my kids are getting older and I have more time that now that I didn't have before. Also, my career with the federal government is drawing to a close. And what I learned when I took an early retirement some years ago, I'm the type of person that requires continuous challenges and, and new challenges. And in the short term, I actually, before I even went out and gathered signatures, I had to clear this with my employer. And they gave me the okay to, to go ahead and fully realizing the time commitments and, and I just would be using my annual leave for meetings and, and so forth.
Thank you.
Pastor Smith?
Jack, thank you for applying. I'm going to go right to asking you what your three priorities are. You indicated you really don't have an agenda and you're not an activist. So this is your chance to try and identify for us what your top three priorities are for the city and what you do plan to do as a council member to achieve them and add, and add on there, not only achieve those three top priorities, but where do you fit in and what's, what's your interest? So how would you play out in that role?
Yeah, my top three priorities would be crime, the unhoused and economic and fiscal health. With crime, I, I live in a, in a neighborhood District Four, has been subject to a lot of crime in the last few years. And, and I just feel that, that there aren't enough boots on the ground. And, and I would look for ways of not only enhancing technology, but finding ways to, to put more, more officers or community service officers, whatever it takes to, to, to increase the police presence. With regards to the unhoused, I think the city needs to continue to work with various agencies and nonprofits to mitigate this problem. At the same time, we may need to look at enforcing existing bankruptcy laws. And with fiscal health, I think that money doesn't come from nowhere and we need to look at ways of enhancing revenue and cutting expenses.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, and then my question, you, you had identified the unhoused piece. There was conversation earlier around homelessness prevention. So just general question around housing. What, what do you see as potential policy opportunities that exist for the city of Monterey?
Housing is, is a, is a complex issue. One, Monterey has certain geographic limitations where we're not bound up by oceans or mountains. We have boundaries with the city of, of Seaside, Sand City, Carbel, Pacific Grove. And we just have, we, we just don't have a lot of, of land. Housing is also a, a commodity that reacts to frankly, supply and demand. And I don't know how to, to deal with that directly. One thing that we can look at, as some of the other candidates have brought up, is looking at allowing alternative units to be built on property and removing some of the barriers to that and making it easier for, for people to do that. Because right now it's very hard.
Thank you. And then we'll go to Councilmember Barber.
Good evening. Thank you for being here this evening. My question is, how do you think the city should address two areas where the city is significantly underfunded? Over $150 million in unfunded pension liability and hundreds of millions of dollars in aging infrastructure, including the library, police station, fire stations, community centers and the sports center?
Yeah, with regard to, to pensions, that's interestingly enough, an accounting issue. And it's, it's very important, but the way that, that pensions are accounted for is that the, the whole cost of the pension is realized in the short term when it's actually a long-term issue. With regard to the, the other matters, we're, we're going to need to balance the, 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 the income and the revenue that the city has with the needs, with, with those needs.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, Jack. Thank you so much for your application. And you can go ahead and take your seat again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, so let's go ahead and start with public comment in the chambers. If you all wouldn't mind lining up off to the podium here. And then we're going to go ahead and give two minutes per, per speaker. We'll give staff a second to get us set up here. Yeah. Are we all set? Got two minutes? Perfect. Thank you. All right.
Good evening, Mayor Williamson, Councilmembers Hoppa, Barber and Smith. My name is Marta Craftcheck. I am here again to urge you to support the appointment of Jean Rash to the council member vacancy for the city of Monterey. Of the many qualified candidates, there is only one with the background and knowledge necessary to help you confront the many issues we face as a community. Jean's experience is evidenced by her long-term involvement with the city of Monterey. Not only is the current president of the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association, but her commitment and efforts as vice chair of the NCIP Committee. Jean has wide support from different neighborhoods because she understands the many diverse citywide issues. She is open and objective, always working towards solving problems and reaching a positive result. Jean's professional experience as an attorney, as well as her community advocacy, have enabled her to look at all sides of an issue, and this would be an asset to the city. Our city council needs experience, knowledge and vision from all of you moving forward. Monterey has many neighbors, each with different challenges. However, we need a broad, broad and encompassing perspective that focuses on all our city needs to the benefit of our community as a whole. Please use this opportunity to seat, to seat the most qualified candidate to the council position, Jean Rash. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Williamson, members of the city council, Luis Osorio, former member of the Architecture Review Committee and former planning commissioner for about six years. I think the process made it for a true job interview. I thought that the questions were all well-designed and well-thought-out, so we can all appreciate that. I think the candidates all have, you know, a lot of qualities and a lot of assets. And also there's, some of them are deficient. And I'm not going to be able to say that. I'm sure you're all going to have to balance their answers and what you read in their paperwork that they submitted. I think the, the one critical issue here is the involvement that each one of these candidates has had throughout the years in not just coming to city council and commission meetings, but also in interacting with the neighborhood associations. Because that's where the real interactions are with the citizenship. And some of us have learned the hard way. But that's a key aspect of, of the job, how people will respond, you know, when people show up to hearings and how they will, you know, come up with the, the process of decision-making. I think Jean Rash is, is probably the one that has been most involved. And she has a wealth, a wealth of knowledge and involvement that I, I think will be a real asset for the council to have. And she'll be another woman on the council which will help you balance out, you know, the makeup of the council. And so I appreciate the opportunity to, to comment again. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shane Strong and I'm here to speak on behalf of my friend Daniel Presser this evening. I first came to Monterey in 2005. I was stationed up the hill. And that's where I fell in love with my wife and the city. It's been our long-term dream to come back here. And then late 2019, I was licensed to practice law in California and I wanted anything to have a one-way ticket to the coast. Got here just in time for the pandemic. Man, it's been rough for a young family. And it's hard to make friends and I, I'm, I'm very much a creature of service and helping other people. So I put myself to the task in trying to find opportunities to serve. And Daniel Presser was at all of those places. I tell you this because he, like me, is driven by service. It was at the Legion Post 41. It was at the United Veterans Council, the Stand Down, the Veterans of the Year Award, the Heroes Open, the Veterans Issues Advisory Commission. I'm missing things. And I'm just talking about his veteran service. He serves in more capacities than that. And it's also been my unique privilege to see him operate as a member of a committee. He disagrees without being disagreeable, which I find to be a rare skillset. He is somebody that I like to have in the room because he can have a, a perspective that's not held by somebody else. But he's not willing to die on every hill just because it's his thought. He wants to hear what's the best way forward and he'll make those decisions. He's also very generous with his time, as I've already given examples of. He's also very gracious. One thing that, one of the questions that were coming up was about staff. And obviously you don't oversee staff, but I know each of you recognizes the time that public servants put into this position. He would be the first one in line to thank people for their service. So for these reasons, I encourage you to appoint my good friend Daniel Presser here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leila Fomson. I'm a student. I'm a resident of Monterey and I'm an environmental advocate. And having listened to the past few hours of this meeting, to me, it seems as though climate change and environmental issues are not necessarily this council's top priority. And while I understand that and I understand that it is difficult to grasp the urgency of an emergency that is unfolding over decades rather than weeks or days, I would urge you to see climate change and environmental issues as an existential threat to Monterey, especially in a community where so much depends for our businesses, for our tourism, on the ocean, on the seas, on our coastline, and especially as a community which is already facing challenges with water supply in the midst of California's historic drought, which is ongoing and which will probably keep going for quite some time. I personally, as a resident of Monterey, do not want to have these things that make Monterey special or coastline or wildlife, the people who live here disappear while I'm still alive. I would like to keep living in this wonderful, pristine community for decades to come. And as such, I urge you as a council to be proactive and brave in addressing climate change now. And with that said, there's one candidate here who has consistently been addressing climate change as a priority. That is Beth Babinski, and I urge climate change as a priority, that is Beth Babinski, and I urge this council to support her. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gabe. I am a resident, a renter, and I work in public policy advocacy. And I must say, the last speaker really nailed it in terms of what our priorities should be in this city. So I'm not here to support a specific candidate so much as values. Obviously, the environmental threats to Monterey are not much different from those that are faced by cities across California and the world. And they are going to require innovative solutions. And bravery is definitely a good aspect to look for here, as well as critical thinking and people who are willing to push for new ideas because old ideas are what got us here. So I just encourage you to look for people who are here to really examine the problems with critical thought and look for innovative solutions. Try new things because we can't keep trying what we've been doing. So I have every faith in this council to find someone who will do it. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Gina Jet. I'm a resident of Monterey County, Monterey, city of Monterey, I'm sorry. I take this opportunity to request that you seriously consider appointing the clearly most qualified candidate, Jean Rash, to the currently vacant at-large position. Many of you know Jean's longtime work on the NCIP as president of the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association and her longtime activism in undergrounding utilities. Her resume and application for this position clearly demonstrate her historical breadth and understanding of Monterey issues and her knowledge about city government. I wish to exemplify Jean's positive contributions, of which you likely are unaware. When the city banned gas leaf blowers, Jean, along with other residents, took the initiative to educate landscapers about the new law. She patiently and kindly talked with the workers who literally had the banned equipment in their hands. Second example, at a two-way stop where a woman was injured and her dog killed, Jean conferred with concerned neighbors and a city representative about how to make the intersection safer. The partial solution involved three property owners cutting back their shrubbery and continued maintenance of the vegetation at the intersection. Additionally, the city cooperatively installed a traffic calming curb. Jean Rash is by far your most qualified candidate. Thank you in advance for considering Jean's application.
Thank you.
That ends up from Monterey Vista, mayor and city council members. I know the appointment of a person from the part of Monterey that has never been representative would be a very nice thing to do, but I feel that experience in city matters is even more important. I feel it would be preferable to have a person who has experience in many issues within the city, including NCIP, working with the Planning Commission and Planning Department, the city council, parks and recreation, on wireless issues, on park issues like the pickleball and other neighborhood issues. Jean was also on the Measure S Committee and was the one person on that committee who stood up wanting to have a dig-ones policy added to that initiative. She failed, but she's the one who spoke up. And I think we're seeing the results now that a lot of work's being done and it's going to be redone in years to come at much added expense. Also, last year, she was the co-chair of NCIP in the year when NCIP was probably the most disrupted because of the money being taken back, coming, the money coming back to NCIP, the decision on which projects would stay and go. And Jean was the one who was able to sort that out, and the committee has come up with good solutions, I think. Anyway, Jean is a fine person with great communication skills and would be a proven addition to the council. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Susan Nine. I'm a Monterey resident, and I want to thank all of the great candidates who spoke. I heard some very good answers, and I appreciated the questions from the council. I, this process is different than a normal election where you have a long period to get to know candidates, to have them thoroughly vetted in multiple candidate forums throughout the city. And it feels more like a job interview, and I've sat on a lot of interview teams over the years in my role as an educator. And I've learned that being a really great interviewer doesn't necessarily equate with being the best person for the job. So I think that's one important thing, but I've always, I've found the most important quality to be a track record, a proven track record, and experience, a resume that can be checked and relied on. We don't really have to do much checking with Jean. I've been former neighborhood president, I'm an environmental activist, and well, and I know Jean to be very environmentally attuned. She has spearheaded an undergrounding committee that's devoted to improving the environment, reducing fire risks. She's very involved in the Wireless Ordinance Committee that I served on. She attended almost every meeting and gave public comment for maximizing the city's right to maximize their control over the placement of wireless facilities. I know Jean, I love a lot of these candidates, but I've never seen them before, with the exception of maybe Kevin, who's turned up at a few meetings that I've been at. So I am, I'm just advocating for Jean because I know her and I know she'll be a great asset to the community. Thank you.
Okay, we will go online.
All right, first, we have John Sovereign.
Good evening, council members. I am not a friend of Jean Rash, but I do come to praise her. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
As you know, conflict sometimes gives you insight into people that you don't get otherwise. And I was across the bargaining table from Jean Rash. She mentioned the pickleball controversy and the prize of park. And I just want to say I respect her passion for representing her concerns and constituents and her dedication to listening, problem-solving, and moving forward. Jean Rash represents the city of Monterey motto, "Anda." Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Kent Glensor. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thanks all. So I'm not here to ask the city council to vote for anybody. I'm really interested in a couple of things. One is, you know, who drives the city's economy? And it is largely people who don't make a living wage. And I really appreciated everybody who have candidated themselves about affordable housing. I really appreciate that. And I'm, I don't like the fact that anybody, you know, explicitly recognized that it's black and brown and low-income white people who are faced with this. And so I want the, I want the city council to think about who they bring in, to think about who can represent those people apart from, you know, platitudes about affordable housing. The second thing is, I want the city council to choose somebody who feels weird to you. I want you to choose somebody who doesn't necessarily fit in. Because that's the way great organizations are. You've got to bring somebody in who somewhat disturbs you. And that's my counsel to the council is, please choose somebody that seems a little weird. I'm done.
This is the benefit of public input.
Thank you. Next, we have Ray Myers. Go ahead.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Williamson and council members. I understand it's difficult to make a decision on the best person to fill a vacancy for city council, but I can't imagine a person more qualified to best represent the people of the entire city of Monterey than Jean Rash. In fact, there's three words stand out to me to describe Jean. It's vision, caring, and good old-fashioned gumption. I believe he must possess all three in order to be a quality leader. I've been able to work directly with Jean on numerous issues over the years, such as getting approval for the feasibility study for a citywide fiber optic cable and a project to place underground utility conduit in the street through the NCIP program. But nowhere has Jean demonstrated her skills better than with her leadership to the undergrounding utility lines citywide for Monterey. Jean was the president of Monterey Undergrounding from 2018 to 21. Throughout the process of meeting monthly for the last four years with this group, Jean's leadership in Monterey has focused on practical solutions for funding this project by educating the public on how undergrounding our utilities can restore natural beauty to Monterey while protecting its people from wildfires and making our electric grid more resilient. She's been able to coordinate, persuade numerous very influential people to speak to our group, but we're able to learn from their experiences. She was able to get representatives from other cities and other areas of Monterey that is already undergrounded, their utilities, such as Del Monte Beach, Soladad Drive, Pebble Beach, Berkeley, et cetera, and even an underground firm, Harrison Associates, among others. Thank you very much for considering my personal testimony and sincere endorsement of Jean Rash for the vacancy of the city council position.
Thank you. Next, I have Veronica Miramontes. So this computer had access like that. I'm calling on Veronica Miramontes, and I apologize for the crazy feedback.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So hello, Mayor Williams and esteemed council. My name is Veronica Miramontes, and I'm a mother of three, a member of the California Latino School Board Association, and a member of the National Association of elected Latino Leaders, and the trustee of the Monterey Peninsula Unified School District, who are representing the Monterey area. My apologies for not being there in person, but I'm recovering from being under the weather. As a fellow elected official of Monterey, I like to share my understanding that this will not be an easy choice, but I do hope you guys make the right decision, and I know that you will, for finding someone that represents the entire city of Monterey. When I applied for the MPST school board, the appointment process was quite similar, just as many great applicants like you see today. But when I looked around the room that day, no one looked like me. A thirty-four-year-old Latina indigenous woman, by the end of the process, actually won the unanimous vote. With a little under thirty thousand residents in the Monterey City, our latest census shows that the Hispanic Latino population is the second-largest race in our city. Representation is needed, and so. Gino Garcia does not only bring representation to the council, but he also brings an opportunity to bring more voices to the table that go unheard, but are just as vital. Gino's communication, relatability, and diverse understanding of our city stands out today. It is very promising. Gino's engagement attends many of our meetings at MPST because he cares about the youth. And I haven't heard that much from other applicants today. And he also supports teacher housing. Gino advocates for safer neighborhoods and advocates for resources to help Monterey families thrive in this high cost of living. Gino Garcia is the right choice to advance memory for generations to come, and I really do hope you guys consider him as your next person to the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a telephone caller with the last three digits, two zero four. Go ahead, please.
Yes, good evening. Tom Rowley from Fisherman's Flats neighborhood. I currently am the president of that neighborhood. So my remarks have not been passed before either our executive committee or the community at large. However, it's very clear in listening to the interviews that the two most experienced proposed candidates are Jean Rash and Kevin Dayton, as far as familiarity with what the city and the problems it's been facing. Jean, of course, has strong ties to her neighborhood association. Kevin Dayton has strong ties to the business community, so there's a trade-off there. One thing that disturbs me about Jean Rash is her outright support for a rental registry, which is a very high-priced program that a city the city size of Monterey probably cannot afford. I've reviewed that as part of my work in looking for Realtor, looking for affordable housing for thirty-five years. Beware of fast solutions and quick solutions and magic bullets. The main magic bullet we need is more water to solve our housing problem. That is the key issue. So thank you very much. Appreciate being able to provide input. Good luck on picking the right candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And next, we have Esther Malkin. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I don't envy the council having to make this choice, but I do want to point out the fact that District Four has never had anybody sit on this council before. And I will echo what Veronica Miramontes said about Gino Garcia. I also, the timer's not going, so I hope this isn't going to. I also want to point out that I as well know Jean very well and a hundred percent have faith in her. And if she lived in District Four, she would be my absolute ideal candidate to represent my district and the rest of the city, but sadly, she does not. What I want to point out is that the other districts, one and two, just ran in this past election unopposed candidates. Where were all these candidates that are here tonight from those districts during the election? Why didn't they step up then? We would have, if we would have had the luxury in District Four to run this election, we certainly would have, but the previous council decided that one half of the city runs this election and the other half in 2024. I do not believe that it is fair to have a district that has never, ever been represented in the history of the city council wait unnecessarily till 2024 while we have two excellent candidates applying in Gino Garcia and Laura Nagel. I think it's unfortunate that we weren't able to run candidates this time, but we should not have to wait until 2024 to get representation. And those candidates have stated that they are going to be And those candidates have stated that they are going to be just as interested in the welfare of the whole city as well as our district, which is very different than some of these other neighborhoods and districts that are running. So please consider our district seat as a priority.
Thank you. And next, we have a telephone caller with the last three digits, four, five, two. Telephone caller four, five, two. Go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Michaela, nicknamed Kayla Fossum, president of Villa Del Monte Neighborhood Association. And we are in District Four. I would like to give the weight of our entire neighborhood and my board behind Esther's comments and Gino Garcia. It is high time that our side of the city is represented on the city council. And I endorse Gino not just because he's Hispanic, but because he is very qualified and he makes a good presentation. He's enthusiastic. He wants to learn the issues. He has been a resident for a number of years in the city of Monterey and watched everything that's going on. And also because he is Hispanic, because I live in the highly densely populated area of Villa Del Monte, actually right across from the bowling alley, I have a condo here. And it is very densely populated. There are a lot of Hispanics and it's it's time that the Hispanic population in my neighborhood be represented. Therefore, I urge the council to appoint Gino Garcia. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have a telephone caller with the last three digits, six, six, nine. Telephone caller six, six, nine. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. This is Mitchell Sonny. I'm a business owner from Alvarado Street. Good evening, mayor and council and everyone that has taken the time to join this meeting either in person or virtually. I'd like to start off by saying what an impressive and open way of having everybody participate in such an important process. I wish the council the best of luck with this difficult decision. Not at all envy us that you're in the shoes you're in, and thank you for all your service. Clearly, that is a daunting liability. I think during the meeting, I heard someone say that there's a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of unfunded liability. And while two of the candidates very coyly said, hey, we could just raise taxes, some of the candidates had really, really good answers to that very specific question that I believe Councilmember Smith raised. I think great, with great position comes great responsibility. With great responsibility comes the daunting task of making difficult decisions. Fiscal responsibility and fiscal financial stewardship, I believe, is absolutely necessary in any role that you have. I believe Kevin Dayton mentioned that he is from the district for which will be up for election in two years, and he is a good policy guy. Obviously, I would like to recommend him. Why didn't any of the others run for office in this last election cycle if they are from those districts already? That's another question. Also, the young lady from NASA, I forget her name. I'm sorry. I apologize. She seems like she's naturally gifted in solving problems. I'll be brief. Taxes is not always the answer.
Thank you very much. And next, we will hear from Libby Downey. Libby, go ahead, please. You'll need to unmute.
Got it.
There we go.
Hear me? Okay. First of all, I'd like to commend the city, the mayor and the city council for doing a very professional job in interviewing. Second of all, I'm really impressed with the quality of the candidates. Now to address who I will support. I was asked one time to be on a panel to try to push for women to be more involved in politics. And I agree with that, but the most important thing to me is that the best person is in that position, no matter what the sex, what the nationality or anything else. And Jean Rash can go off. She's informed, so she's often running from the very beginning. I've worked with her. Her list when she talked was all substance. It was all issues that are germane to the city. And she's well acquainted with city issues, obviously, from her NCIP, her planning, parks and rec, neighborhood. She's just been really involved. And I would encourage some of the others to get more involved and then run at the next election. We do need some more people running for city council. So good luck to all of you.
You don't want to unplug things at the city.
The computer would have been the next step, but thank you for that.
Are there any more public comments? Okay. So at this time, we will close public comment and we will bring it to the council for deliberation. And I would like to just start off by thanking every single candidate. I, several people have indicated it today. Everybody seems completely qualified for this, and so I think we do have a really tough decision to make. I, two of the things that I really appreciate about every single one of the candidates is the love that I see for this city and the dedication and commitment to service. And those were two really important things for me as, as looking at considering who to select for this vacancy. And so it just makes the, the selection process all the more challenging. So seriously, thank you all for this. And, and I think despite the fact of whatever direction that we take, I don't think it has any indication towards the lack of ability of any of you at all. So with that, I will go ahead and open up the dialogue for the council to discuss the topic. Does anybody want to get us going?
I guess I'm willing to. Again, to echo Mayor Tyler's opening. First of all, thank you to everybody who applied. And yes, you're all extremely well-qualified. I think I was just noting, we have attorneys, we have health professionals, we have scientists, planners, small business owners. And so I think all of you have relevant professional experience, and I think you, you made that point. That being said, you know, how do we narrow it down? And when council was deliberating the process, I think staff maybe encouraged us to think, do we just want to look at the unrepresented districts? Do we want to look at the whole city? I supported looking at the whole city, partly because we didn't know who would apply. We didn't know how many would apply. And so I thought it was important to have our options open and to, in essence, you know, fish in the whole lake instead of in one, you know, one bay or pond in the lake. And, and I think the results of that have been profitable. We have a lot of good applicants. That being said, I think there was a point made that does make some sense to me, which is we did just have an election in districts one and, and two. So all of those folks could have run for election. And I think it's also a valid point that, you know, District Four in particular has no representation and has never had representation. So I think that for me is something that I weigh pretty heavily. When we were having the discussion about districting, I felt like District Four in particular because it includes the most underrepresented, underrepresented folks in our community, and that was part of the whole purpose of districting in the first place, that it didn't make sense to me that we're going to make them wait. But I lost that. And, and so that, that election will happen in 2024. But now we have an opportunity to appoint somebody from, from that district. I represent the city at large. I was elected at large. I do live in District Three. But I kind of feel like we should focus on District Four and/or District Three. And I think we have good applicants. I'm just looking at, in District Four, we have three applicants. I felt like Gino Garcia and Laura Nagel both came here well-prepared and liked a lot of what they both had to say. And in District Three, we have a number of good applicants. But as we heard from the community, I think Jean Rash definitely stands out. So from my point of view, I kind of feel like those three are where I'm leaning.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoffa.
You want me to speak?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Impressive. Thank you all. As Alan has gone through and identified the different vocations and skill set of the candidates that, that applied tonight, very much appreciate all the efforts. And it was obvious that you had all studied, probably some better than more or others and some prepared and all prepared to some degree. So I want to tell you my thinking, and I haven't decided yet. So I came in tonight wanting to say I'm looking across the city and measuring the, the talent of all of the candidates irrespective of, of district. Because I wanted to keep my mind open, because I wanted to say, if I was hiring someone, if I was asking somebody to, to join my team, I would not want to compromise skills and experience and the aptitude for the job because one maybe lived closer than the other, or, you know, one of the other ones maybe had more connections. I just needed to clear that out and say everybody is equal irrespective of where, where they live and which district they fall. But let me just outline a couple of things that I, I'm looking at. I was looking at the depth of answers. I was looking for well-communicating the, the points, the issues and concise. I wanted insightful. I wanted to focus on who is really, really qualified. I appreciate the one caller who said, look for weird. I appreciate that, but I think what I took from that was don't be afraid to find a contrarian, because sometimes someone who is in a professional dissent methodology of advocating can raise the, the thought-provoking ideas in the room. So I, I appreciate the comment. So I was looking at well-balanced. In other words, they weren't coming in with an agenda where the things that they spoke about were clearly going to be the drivers that they would have. And did those drivers put them in contrast to city values? So I was looking for less about agenda-driven, but more about the vastness of the experience that we need in what a council really does. All the things we do. We serve on boards. We carry a vote for this council to those boards. We also have a lot of closed sessions. We have litigation. We have contract issues. We have personnel issues. A lot of the work that we do on every other Tuesday, you don't see the closed sessions because by law they are in the private, because they're contracts, personnel or litigation. So there's a lot going on there as well. So I compared the skill set. I was looking for some sense of the NCIP, a sense of the budgets, understanding budgets and what they would be able to do with a budget and demonstrated and then in their experience, in their focus or their, their job. And a thousand moving parts that we all deal with as we work with our fantastic city staff. So where does that leave us? If I have to prioritize now after hearing from everyone, I put three people in the top. I put Jack Fields in the top. I put Gino Garcia in the top. And I put Ann Michaels in the top, because for me, what they said, what they demonstrated, how they presented themselves, I got a sense that they, they brought more of it that matched what my criteria was. So I was looking at those three. So if we were to say, in a typical personnel move, we would say, give us the top three. We'd say thank you to everybody else, and we would drill down, and we might ask even more questions. But that's, that's who I put at the top three, because I think they, they hit everything I'm looking for. And this is not an easy job. We know that. It's not going to be an easy job for any of the, the people that we, or the person we select. But there's a lot of really innate smart people that we saw tonight. And I put everybody and the smart value is the same. The caring, the love, the appreciation they have for the city. So this makes it a hard decision, but we have to get it down from the number that we have down to the final, like, one, two or three. So those are my three, and that's why I put those three in that category.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Barber.
Yes. Yeah, I, I definitely agree with what everyone has said so far and what you've already alluded to. I appreciate the diversity of, of every candidate. It's a diverse pool. And that's, that's what I love, is seeing the diverse pool of the people who show the passion and have shown the work that they've already done in the community thus far. And so that has been really impressive. I loved listening to the presentations and getting to learn a little bit more about each candidate. I do appreciate the hearing about the priorities. I think that's real important. Because one of the things by coming through and coming out of this election, you know, we have seen that, you know, the city is, is, is positioned and ready for change. And that doesn't mean it has to be a quick, fast change, but it does mean change, looking at different things. And I believe one of the public comments was talking about looking at more innovative solutions. And so I, I felt that each person had something to bring and something that they were already skill sets, that they were already utilizing that could be very beneficial for the, the council. I did agree that even though this is an at-large position, that hearing from the community that District Four has never been on the council was something that was very impactful to me, because I think and believe in inclusivity. And I, and I think you can't have inclusivity if you're leaving a part out. That doesn't necessarily mean that it would be That doesn't necessarily mean that it would be specifically just district four that I would look at. But I do think that that's a pertinent part to remember. I I felt like everybody had great answers. And they were, you know, they were diverse answers and and great answers and 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 some were in depth and some were not. But I feel that you could still see the passion, could still see the work ethics that were already being done. And and I just love that we all have that love for our city and want to see it, you know, to progress even more moving forward. But with all of those characteristics that I've been looking at and looking at the different questions, I actually have my Google sheet. That's the research academic person of me and looking at it. I I really am looking at Jean. If I looked at my top three, I would be looking at Jean. I would be looking at Laura. And I would be looking at third person. Jean Roche as well.
When you said the the Jean, the first Jean, was that Gino?
I'm sorry, yes, I I have it as Jean, so I I apologize if it's Gino. Is it supposed to be Gino?
Yeah.
Okay, so Gino.
Yep, that's it.
Yeah.
Perfect. So just to reiterate, you said Jean, Laura and Gino.
Correct.
Perfect, okay, okay. So I also think it's important for us to give some level of weight, similar to what what Kim had just shared to the applicants in in district four. When we were discussing going to districts a year ago, one of the major points of discussion was the sequencing and deciding which council seats were going to go first. And there was a lot of people in the community that had expressed the need for for us to bring district four into the fold sooner rather than later because of the lack of representation. And so I think that that does weigh heavy, again, in particular because we have quality candidates from across the city. So not that that exclusively alone is a driving factor, but I think it it is a a factor that we we really should be considering here. I also think because of the lack of candidates that have come out of district four, this might provide us a great opportunity to get somebody that's ready to serve. To me, the worst case scenario is the filing period closes in 2024 and nobody has submitted an application to run, where this might allow us to create that transition and transitioning into districts and get somebody to be able to hit the ground running who has some experience under their belt. So that being said, I also would have to agree that if I were to come up with a a top three, it would be Jean, Laura and Gino. So if I look at this, it seems like that that's pretty consistent across the board. Ed was the only individual on the council who had expressed interest in in three, two outside of those three, which were Jack and Annie. So it seems pretty clear that we have a top three to consider.
Well, and it seems like there's only one candidate that all four of us mentioned, which was Gino Garcia.
Yep.
Yeah.
And he's just, he's, you know, do you want?
Absolutely, please.
You know, I think as as we discussed this is, if I had three children and I sat down and I said, well, which two do I love more than the third? I wouldn't want them in the same room. So my apologies, this is, do you get this? This is, you know, it's awkward. We're talking about people that really care. So we have to, we have to do this in a public session. And so we're we're narrowing this down. Gino stood out to me, as did the others. I I like, I liked his presentation. And what I I tell you, what I really liked was the fact that he didn't read his answers. And when we had questions for him, he he was able to navigate through and very broadly talked about the connections and he identified several things that are things that we we deal with, we will be dealing with. And and I liked his suggestions. You know, some of the ADU stream lighting, I think he set his priorities, but they weren't like, I'm an activist and this is why I want to do it. And it wasn't, I'm pushing these things on you. I got a sense that his experience would put him in a position to be able to really, really grow very, very quickly into the complete role of the city council. Now, I'm not saying I'm an expert at this, but, you know, I've made enough mistakes in the last eight years. I can say that there is a learning curve. And I think it takes someone that demonstrated the kinds of things I saw in Gino. And so I could support Gino for all those things and all those reasons as well as district four. And he expressed his his commitment and did a good job in the interview. And so I could support a Gino Garcia selection.
Okay. And and I just offer to continue the dialogue or there can be a motion. And, you know, I think we're, we might be getting to a space, but I also don't want to shut the rest of the council off from being able to provide some additional input here, if you think that would be helpful.
Well, can I, can I ask a question that maybe Alan and Kim could offer? We we did set aside another day if we felt like we got down to the top, the top candidate. Do we need to hear more? Are we, are we ready? Because there is that option, but.
My. Ed, I think if, I think if we had two candidates or let's say two, two or three of us, but I then I would maybe say, yeah. But I think, you know, in terms of just the commonality, I feel like, given the fact that there's one candidate you're comfortable with, that all of us are comfortable with, I'm inclined to just move that forward tonight. But if if there were two or three that we all kind of shared in common or three or two or three of us did, then I might be more inclined to do what you're suggesting, if that makes sense.
Well, and I'm I'm not suggesting, I'm just offering it as a process in the in the choice. I don't need another day. I think I've I've heard, took notes, listened. And I just wanted to throw that out there in case anybody was thinking they needed more.
At this point, I don't, I don't think, I don't need more at this point as well. I I think I've heard enough from not only the candidates, but the public, you know, knowing what the city is thinking and how they feel as well, taking that into consideration. And then the answers that we received. I think we have enough to be able to, you know, have a result and an outcome at this point.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Gino Garcia.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, any further deliberation? All right, roll call, vote, please.
Can we, I'm sorry, can we reserve just a second for closing comments?
Absolutely.
Because I think it's, it's too big to just let it, you know, go through.
Pass through, yeah.
I I just want to say that I thoroughly enjoyed the process. I I really appreciate all the hard work and the effort you all took. And as you go out of here, I'm sure there's going to be some that are going to be disappointed. And I just want to make this plug that that says, don't turn that disappointment into saying, okay, I tried, that's it and walk out. There's an election in two years. There's an election in two years in district three. There are boards and commissions that we need you for. We have planning commission, ARC, I mean, you know, historical. I mean, there's all kinds of things and all kinds of ways to get plugged in. So please, look at that as a possibility. You love the city as we all do. So continue your journey and and become involved in some way. And we would really appreciate that extra effort in your service because this does not work unless we have our citizenry involved, communicating with us. And as as we say, if the if the room is big and we get people in the room, leaders can pay attention, the answer is in the room. And we so much need you to continue to be involved. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Alan?
I mean, I think Ed said it well, which is, please stay involved. We do need you and there's a lot of great talent in the room.
Thank you. Kim?
Yes, I echo the same sentiments. It's all about collaboration and the work that you do, we need. And we need to continue to see that work and so that we can be able to move forward. Because it's not about any one of us, even though one person is being appointed tonight, doesn't mean that it takes away from all the work that you've done, that you continue to do. We we appreciate that and we see you. And we continue, we want to continue to see you moving forward as we collaborate, moving together. Because it is important for us to be inclusive, working together to build a city that we know that we not only want, but that we need.
Can we ask a question?
Go ahead.
Before we lose some of the public?
Yep.
When would this person be sworn in? And maybe we can take the vote and then we bring that.
We're looking at tonight. It looks like if we're moving forward with this. So let's make a motion first before.
Vote on.
Sorry, yeah, let's vote on that. But I I will just reiterate the the point that you made and really just highlight. You know, there are the boards, commissions and and committees. So I highly encourage for folks that aren't already engaged in in one of those spaces to step forward and and participate in those. There's also school board, water board. And there's a lot of opportunities for folks to step up and get involved. And seriously, I I hope that we can find and work together as a community to find spaces for all of you, because all of you were great candidates to consider tonight. And it made it for a really tough decision, but really great opportunity for us together as a community to to try to get everybody plugged in somehow. So with that, we will go to a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Hi.
And Mayor Williamson.
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay. Congratulations, Gino.
Congratulations.
Our our city clerk Clementine is preparing the swearing in oath of office documents. We'll just need a few moments and then we can swear in.
Okay, so we will take a short break. But I just ask for folks to just stick around, because as soon as she comes back in, we'll we'll get going again. But feel free to stretch your legs, socialize. Got the hammer. Okay, so Hans, I think we're passing it to Clementine to connect the swearing in. So, yeah, Gino, come on up.
So, Gino, this is a ceremonial process that takes place before everyone assumes office. And it's basically the same oath that all elected officials do up to, including the president. So I'm going to say the oath to you, phrase by phrase, and you repeat after me, okay? I state your name.
I, Jean Garcia.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of Cal.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Gino, you can come sit up here.
We couldn't get your name tag because we had to do like 10 of them.
And here's my virtual hug to you.
On, but, okay, so once you sit. we're gonna do, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. And we'll go ahead and call the meeting to adjournment.